Manager of the City Attorney Show will start. If we can get the city manager to come down, please, we can start this. We're going to call this meeting in the West Community City Council order. We're going to start with the invocation led by Pastor Mason Ohuko from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Corey Warshaw. Please rise.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, as you are the authority above all authorities, I ask your blessings and wisdom to be upon our city council, that they may carry out your will in guiding our city. Send your Holy Spirit among us, that we might work together in harmony for the good of the people of West Covina. Thank you for all who give of their time and talents to serve our city. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please place our flag, put your right hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Toma?
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Spence?
Here. Are there any items reported out of closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session this evening.
Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there is one, and that is item number 21, which is take up position on Assembly Bill 2156. We've been made aware that there is some competing legislation that's now circulating in Sacramento, and so we're going to pull that item off and bring that back at a later time, unless it's been amended or there's other language that's actually brought forward regarding the same matter. So for this time, we'll pull it off the agenda.
Okay, is there anything else? And then, okay, we do have a proclamation. Pauline, if I can have you come forward, and we'll talk about Small Business Week.
So every year, the Small Business Administration has the National Small Business Week, where they take the time to recognize the contributions that the local small businesses throughout the nation provide to our local communities and to the US economy. So as part of being a small business-friendly city, we value the contributions that the local small businesses here in West Covina make to our community, making it a better community for residents. And so we'd like to take the time to recognize them, and we have our very own West Covina Small Business Week. And so we have a program, there's flyers up in the front, and it includes three different events. We start off with an award ceremony, where we're going to be awarding three local small businesses for Small Business of the Year, Women in Business, and Innovative Resource Award, that we've partnered with our Small Business Development Center, and they're nominating that awarty. We're also going to have a keynote presentation from Victor Parker, he's the director of the local SBA office. And then we'll also be having a presentation by our Small Business Development Center Director regarding how you can use them to help grow and make your business successful. Tuesday, we have a panel presentation with SCORE on how to refresh and start a business in the city of West Covina. And then on Thursday, it will be a mixer that we co-host with the Greater West Covina Business Association, and that will be at Craft Hill, and that one does require tickets. But we encourage everyone that's interested in opening up a business or has a business in the city to participate in any and all events. And once again, the flyers are up front, and you can also find information about Small Business Week on our website.
You know, based on our location in West Covina, we've been blessed by having the freeways, that we do get a lot of big businesses and the big chains here. But we also get a lot of small and mom and pops that start here. And they grow, and they become very important parts of our community, and we want to recognize that. So please take advantage of the opportunities to participate in Small Business Week and to celebrate our small businesses, and please shop West Covina small businesses. There's a lot of new ones that have started up, and they're very important to all of us. So on behalf of all small businesses, we're declaring the week of April 29th to May 5th, National Small Business Week. And so with that, please support our small businesses. Can you stand? No photo necessary. There's no photo for you. Tonight, we'd also like to adjourn our council meeting in honor of Rocco, one of our West Covina Police Department K-9 dogs. K-9 Rocco served alongside his partner, Police Corporal Franco, watching over the people of West Covina for seven and a half years before retiring. During his tour of duty, K-9 Rocco was credited with locating numerous felons that were trying to flee from justice, and he was also selected to serve on the West Community Police Department SWAT team. We extend our sincere condolences to the West Community Police Department and the loss of our former K-9 dog, Rocco. Is there anyone else that have adjourned a memory? So please, please note that on the record that we're adjourning in honor of Rocco.
Some persons in the audience mentioned that Barbara Bush just passed away today. So former First Lady, I think we should mention her too, in our, what do you call it?
Our adjournment memory.
Thank you, adjournment.
Madam City Clerk, please recognize that Barbara Bush passed away today, who spent obviously eight years as First Lady and gave contributions to our nation that way. Recognize her as well.
Will do.
We adjourn. Four, excuse me, four years, four years, that's correct, four years. That's correct, four years. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're now at oral communications. If you can, if you can fill out a yellow card, that'd be great, so we can try to keep it organized. As are ongoing, if you mark one minute, you go first, if you mark three, we'll do those next, in five minutes. First up, Brian Jopst, to be followed by Don Holtz.
Good evening. I'm Brian Jopst, my wife and I are 29-year residents of West Covina. This is regarding item, I think it's agenda number eight, the proposed development by Singpoli at the BKK landfill. The staff report that all of you received says that the California Department of Toxic Substances Control and Cal Recycle expressed concern that the cap and cover of the landfill were not completely, were not completed properly and is not meeting the required standards. So just two questions, if you could have someone on city staff answer those during the meeting at the appropriate time. Question number one, what required standards are not being met, which were discussed on the meeting of February 13th, 2018? And did the city have knowledge of the DTSCs and Cal Recycle's final cap and cover concerns prior to the meeting of February 13th, 2018? Thank you.
Thank you. By Jerry Potras. And that will be three minutes, I'm sure.
Don Holtz, President of West Covina, City Council, staff, and the public. Just a suggestion, more often than not, we've got some things on the agenda about Assembly Bills and Senate Bills, and it gives the number, but it doesn't tell us what it is. I'm just going to suggest that maybe we can do a thumbnail of what that bill is, so we have a better understanding without going to a computer and pulling it up. Just a, you know, one sentence or two sentences of what the bill contains, and I think it'd be helpful to the citizens. Thank you.
Jerry Potras, followed by Ray Edmondson.
Good evening, Jerry Potras, West Covina resident, back again on item 18, I believe it is, the marijuana. I'm really recognizing that the, West Covina needs money. I really understand that. But I have a real problem and concern with the manner in which the council and staff deal with the budget. It's Band-Aid budgeting, and it doesn't work. What would be the purpose of bringing in commercial marijuana? I mean, is it for the Cal-PERS payments, is it for community events, salary increases for staff, additional hiring additional staff? It's not clearly defined on why this keeps coming back. I'd rather it not be here, I would rather see our council deal with the budget, deal with the community with the budget, let us know what's going on, get it out in the open, and develop a very clear plan on what the problems are, and what is needed, and how it could be addressed. Future councils can change what you do, and you don't know. So right now, it might be over in my neighborhood, I consider north of the freeway my neighborhood. Another council could start going and creating new zones, because I asked the city manager once, could other areas be developed? Baldwin Park, 15 possible businesses or more? And they have a councilwoman who is cautioning them that they're going too fast, according to the Tribune articles I read. And we have no plan other than bringing it back all the time, because we want money. Covina-Glendora and Rancho Cucamonga, where our city manager lives, they're still prohibiting it. I really urge the council to just table this, wait and see what happens elsewhere. It's really hard to undo when things go wrong in the public sector. We're still paying for World War II and Depression-era things. We don't stop once we start something in the public sector. Wait, let's see what happens, develop a real budget plan, not a Band-Aid. Evolve the staff in developing that plan, have their time spent dealing with the budget, not studying marijuana commercial growing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Edmondson, followed by, is that Angel? Angel Chu? I can't read the first name, looks like Angel, is that right? Okay, you're, oh, sorry, oh yeah, okay, following him.
Good evening, City Council and members of the public, my name is Ray Edmondson. I'm a 28-year West Covina resident, I'm here to talk about item 16 on the agenda, the cultivation of marijuana. So we were in this room two Thursdays ago, talking about the unfunded accrue liabilities for the PERS pension plan. And I was looking at the PowerPoint again today, and it, the number that came out was $18.84 million in unfunded accrued liability by fiscal year 24, 2015, so that's like seven years from now, six years from now. So that's a problem, and we have an opportunity. And I realize that it's not an opportunity that everyone is particularly thrilled about, but it's an opportunity to get money nonetheless. So we've had, what, one out of every seven cities in California is currently taxing marijuana, it's 45 cities in the first two months of this year, San Jose made $2.2 million, and Oakland made $2.86. I realize there's a bigger cities than us, but Berkeley made $38,000, and Paris and Riverside made $41,000. Paris only has 76,000 people, and Berkeley is at 121,000. So we have 108,000, so we're looking at a potential $40,000 a month. And we can use that, I remember the analogy last special meeting was, we're not trying to outrun the bear, we're trying to outrun the slowest guy. This is an opportunity to kneecap the guy next to us and get ahead of that bear a little bit. And Prop 64 allows city government to impose taxes, but it's after getting approval from voters first. So I say we should put the, we should put together an agenda, or a proposal, and put it to the voters and see what the people of West Covina think. On that, I'd also like to say that I believe the same thing for council, or sorry, for agenda item 15. I think that city clerk and treasurer should be left to the people of the city. Thank you.
Mayor, council member, city managers, staff, good evening. Thank you for taking this opportunity, we present for Chinese-American Association of West Covina. CAWC is to share the good news tonight. For last year's, we have a successful connect with the Fong Tai District of Beijing, China, as a West Covina sister city. For our culture and student exchange program, this year's Fong Tai District will send 50 students to join into a South Hill Academy for summer camp. So in July, also students from here will go into Fong Tai District for next year to learn their culture as well. And also, I would like to take a moment to present to voice out about for West Covina, city allow commercial cultivation of marijuana in our industry. So this is not a good for our next generation, and this is not a good image for our students. So therefore, our position is a firmly opposite. Thank you so much.
Herb Redholtz, followed by Mihal O'Leary.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, Herb Redholtz, 30-year resident of West Covina. I've got three items, the first two are non-agenda. First off, real quickly, the, a quick comment about our last meeting. Our last meeting, for the first time in about 25 years of coming to these chambers, I felt uncomfortable and uneasy. I didn't feel unsafe, because I have faith in our police department to take care of us and keep us safe. But it was a very uncomfortable and not a good feeling. And it's not because of our West Covina neighbors, those were people that came here, outside agitators who were paid to disrupt, and that's exactly what they did. And I hope we never have that again, that type of feeling. Secondly, number two, we are a few months away from our first district election. So I'm up here tonight to suggest that we take a good, hard look at term limits. I was not in favor of term limits when we had at-large elections, because of the citywide voter base. It kind of took care of itself. But now that we are going into five smaller areas of voting districts, I'm very concerned that the possibility of little fiefdoms could happen, where you're going to have individuals retaining their council seat for years and years and years with just a handful of votes in some cases. The possibility could arise that people just, you know, somebody's been in office, and they just don't want to bother with it. But I am very, very concerned that we could be having a little City of Industry over here, and a little Irwindale over here, and a little Vernon over here, and have these little fiefdoms. And that's, could be a byproduct, a very bad byproduct of district elections. So I think we need to take a look at term limits, and I'm thinking like 12 years, three terms. Should be more than enough, okay? Otherwise, you could have people just there forever. Last item is agenda item number four, which talks about citywide branding and marketing, where we are, the proposal is to reject, the idea is to reject the proposals, because, you know, we ain't got no money to go forward. I'm up here to tell you that I would be more than happy to serve as a volunteer on a citizens' panel to brainstorm branding and marketing. You know, it's been kind of a thing, I just, I like it, I've been kind of a student of it for years. You know, mottos, slogans, logos, you know, coming up with things. And I think there's enough talent in this city, where you could get five to seven panel members that would be happy to volunteer their time, that would be more cost-effective. You might just need maybe the assistant or deputy city manager to... You might just need maybe the assistant or deputy city manager to, you know, kind of be part of it. But I think that you would get people that would be willing to do that. I think you'd probably get some pretty darn good ideas, because I think going forward, it's something we really need to look at. That's why it was, you know, proposed in the first place. And if we haven't got the money for professionals, we all complain about consultants and everybody else, I'm here to tell you, I'll do it for nothing. Volunteer. I just want to have some fun with it, and see what we can come up with. And I'm sure there's others just like me that would love to help. Thank you very much.
Okay. Following Mihal, we'll have Elsie Nessman.
Thank you, Mayor Spence. Council members, thank you for taking the time to meet with me today and explain the five-minute rule. I will not be keeping you, knowing how important things are in your city. Listening to the public speakers on this item, in fact, items not on the agenda, I can hear how passionate people are about things that, as former mayor of Culver City, what we've gone through, marijuana, term limits. I have a personal opinion, but these are things that other cities have dealt with. And what I learned as a local city council member, dealing and coming to cities like this, and being involved with the League of California Cities, Independent Cities Association, you will find other cities have gone through this, and they will, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Or you'll get some tidbits of information. But what I'm here today is to tell you, there's a very important election coming up. Yes, you may think it's the governor's election, but it's the same day. It's for the State Board of Equalization. And most people don't know what that is, and I want to offer, as a PSA today, to offer to the public, I am one of the candidates for Board of Equalization, but it has gone through an amazing change, and I wanted to just make sure that the public knows how important this position is for Southern California. Number one, if the polls continue the way they're going, and let's assume, and I'm only going to talk about polling, Gavin Newsom from Northern California becomes governor, Betty Yee, the current comptroller, retains the seat, Northern California, Fiona Ma, Northern California, becomes treasurer. So the purse strings of California are in Northern California. And why does that affect Board of Equalization? Well, Board of Equalization chairman comes from this seat, District Number Three. And as chairman of the Board of the BOE, you become the Franchise Tax Board member by default. So as a Franchise Tax Board member, I would be at the table, if I get elected, or the member would get, at the table with the comptroller and the Department of Finance, and be able to voice Southern California's opinion on very important issues. So I'm here to announce to the public, if the public want to know what the Board of Equalization was, is today, and is concerned, maybe there's an organization that would like me to speak in front of. I'm available. I leave the cards with the city clerk, so people can contact me. And thank you for your time, and good luck with the very important issues of West Covina.
Elsie, followed by Jim Gravich.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, everyone here tonight, and at home. My name is Elsie Nessman. And guess what? I'm back, like it or not. First, I would like to thank our Mayor Mike Spence for standing up for SB 54. When we saw reps from Hilda Solis and head Hernandez's office, we all knew this was a staged protest. These people go from city to city. This meeting of West Covina residents should have been considered. What is the problem with our four council members that voted against our family's security? We are the ones paying the taxes. Seems to me a few months ago, this council approved $100,000 to protect staff from the homeless. You found money for the staff, but you don't have money for the residents? I think you have your priorities screwed up. Again, why are these four council members protecting illegal criminals and putting in jeopardy our ICE agents? This has everything to do with the law. We are a nation of laws, and it's really simple. We either abide by the law, or we break the law. Sanctuary cities are breaking the law by protecting criminals. Now, back to item number eight, I don't think putting solar panels on the south side of BKK is a good idea. The glare from the panels have to be looked into, to make sure houses and cars are not affected. They should be placed on top of the hill. I suggest our city manager talk to the school board. It seems like it's doing great, and they have installed panels on the parking instructions. Need I say anymore? Number 13, adopting a fine for unlawful camping and storage of personal properties. Really? If these people had money, they wouldn't be there. You can't get blood from a stone. We put them in jail, and then we have to pay for them there. What happened to the tax that everyone approved for the homeless people? Where is that money going to? Giving a fine, I think, is a dumb idea. These people aren't getting a salary. And on a last note, I don't think we need marijuana cultivation in this city. This city needs money, and this is a quick way to get it, but we need to stop our spending. And the decisions should be, the ones that the city manager gets, should be looked into. He's a good salesman, so you guys have to do your homework. Thank you.
Following Jim, we have Dana Sykes.
Jim Gravich, I had a little problem with my knee. She's supposed to pass out a little brochure that I prepared for you. It will start out with something that you, I think, already know, which is the retirement presentation that was made, pension presentation that was made last week. One of the slides said the total increased costs in pension that will start this year and continue for the next seven years will be $12 million a year, each year for pensions alone. It was also stated that the city will not have the revenue to pay for that increase. Essentially, you're looking at a situation where you already have a $2 million deficit that's projected for this year, and each year thereafter, you're going to add another $2 million. So next year will be $4 million, the year after that, $6, the year after that, $8. And the point of what I'm trying to say is, as of this moment, the city has taken no effective action to deal with it. There's been some presentations made, some discussions have been had, but nothing has happened. And specifically, why I'm emphasizing this right now is that it's a big, big problem, huge numbers, and nothing's happening. There's an item on the agenda today for marijuana. You've heard me speak over and over again against it. One of the reasons I'm against it is it isn't going to raise enough money to matter. So what's the point? In fact, any money that it raised will be used up in police time to deal with the problems that result from it. And we keep talking, we want a safe city, and yet, we're trying to do something to create a less safe city. So I see no reason to pursue it. But my real issue has to do with $12 million. Jerry used the word Band-Aid, so I'd like to pick it up a little bit. I like that word. The city has, went amounts to a mortal wound. You're bleeding all over the place. One little tiny Band-Aid isn't going to do anything. It's not going to solve the problem. And I don't know how to say this any more eloquently than I have, but, you know, when are you going to go bankrupt? Four years? Three years? You know, Cory and I had a little discussion last week about exactly when is this going to happen? And you have to start acting on it, in real numbers, real changes, not Band-Aids. I do want to talk specifically about the marijuana thing. I provided a lot of material, because last week, there was a speaker that disputed some of my facts, and I have to say that I personally take a front at that, because I was a professional statistician for four years of my life, and I have a, what I consider, serious concerns about the credibility of my numbers. I'll just take one thing that was said. Well, the increase in traffic fatalities was caused by cell phones. Well, the last page of your packet is the national statistics on cellphone fatalities. There has been no increase in cellphone fatalities in the last five years. I don't know where he got his stuff from, but it didn't come from the national statistics that are published by the federal government. The fatalities increases in Colorado have been almost proportionate in exactly the same, and that's the second chart, as the increase in marijuana findings, what they call positive marijuana testing. After a fatality, Colorado runs a drug test that includes marijuana, and so they have the numbers in Colorado. This is not true in almost all the country, but they do in that state. And the increase in fatalities is almost the same as the increase in the marijuana testing positive. It's true that marijuana tests do not prove that that particular person was impaired at the time of the accident, but the fact is that if you have 50 more people die, and 50 more people tested positive for marijuana, you start saying, well, there's a definite relationship there, even if it isn't proof. So statistics-wise, I don't think there's any doubt. And there was also another assertion that states near Colorado had increased fatalities too. It is true of one state, New Mexico.
Last comment.
My last comment is the same one I made over and over again. The residents of the city are opposed to the sale of marijuana in this city.
Dana Sykes, followed by Fred Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council staff, as well as residents. First of all, I support item 22. I think there should be guidelines placed upon independent expenditures. Okay? And at the last meeting, I was so disgusted, I felt dirty and in need of a shower when I left. First of all, what a colossal waste of taxpayer monies, all to serve someone's agenda. The police on fire that could have been on the street or not collecting overtime, were instead at the meeting to keep the peace. Mayor Spence, your leadership at the meeting was nonexistent. You were the perfect example of a poor parent. Johnny, don't do that. Johnny, stop it. I swear, if I had to get up, Johnny, you're in trouble. Meanwhile, Johnny's breaking five things in the building. Johnny, I told you, when we get home, you're in trouble. It doesn't do much. So instead of leading at the meeting, you were the ringmaster stoking up the performers at the circus. I found it interesting, though, I looked up, many that were in attendance, they were anti, that were anti SB 54. Most did not live here. Some were even from California. There were some from Arizona. And many were professional agitators. That is their term, not mine. Example, Arthur Schapper. He is 36, unemployed, but somehow is able to travel across the USA. The Los Angeles County Republicans disavowed him and pulled the charter of the Beach City Republican Club from which he is the president. He has, like many that were in attendance, such as Harim Yuziel, have a GoFundMe account. Some have more than one. When Mr. Schapper, who arrived late but was inserted into the speaker rotation, left the meeting, we witnessed someone handing him an envelope, such as a payment. Can't say for sure it was, but it sure looked like it, and thanked him for coming. Gentlemen, thank you for not taking any action, but did you know Spence signed an amicus brief against SB 54? He brought people from out of town and twisted what the amicus brief for DACA families was about, to further his agenda, and lambasted my husband for signing it, and said he signed it on behalf of the city. How do you spell Spence? Hypocrite.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, 40-year resident of this city, former mayor, also retired deputy sheriff. I'm currently a LA County Commissioner, and I've been a public servant for all of my adult life. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Finley for organizing the Neighborhood Watch meeting that was this Saturday at Home Depot. Also want to thank the neighbors who took the time out of their weekend to attend. There were also some council members there, I'd like to thank them. There was Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, city council members Toma, Washaw, and Wu. Thank you for attending. Also, we had the West Covina Public Safety. We had the police chief, Taylor, Lieutenant Benzchop, and the assistant fire chief, and his staff. Also, while I was at Home Depot, I was contacted by a resident, and he brought to my attention that the city is putting in some wheelchair ramps at Shadow Oak Park, and we would ask that you put in another wheelchair ramp at the dead end of Gemini at Shadow Oak Drive. When you get to that location, if you're in a wheelchair and you're trying to access the bus, you have to travel about 50 yards north to the first cutout, the driveway that leads to the park, the dirt driveway. Then you roll your wheelchair back to the bus stop and you wait. So can we please address that oversight? Thank you. Now, related to the anti-immigrant city council meeting that was produced by our mayor, the immigrants and the descendants of immigrants facilitate West Covina, because they are the majority of the taxpayers by over 80% of the population where you are the mayor. People choose to live here and pay taxes to improve their lives and to feel safe here. And it is not enough of an insult that two of your fellow council members, that would be Washaw and Wu, despite the fact that you have a moral problem, they supported you. By supporting you, they have failed the majority of the city. You have a reputation and a long history of being a drug addict. That endangers your life, endangers members, other members of the public, and you have damaged and destroyed property. Nevertheless, the two council members voted for you to become Mayor Pro Tem and mayor of our city. Now, what makes this so awfully egregious is that in 2015, I signed an amicus brief to protect the majority of West Covina. And of special concern for me was to protect immigrant families and children, children who live in West Covina and only know West Covina as their home. They have lived most of their lives in the United States of America. Relentlessly, you attacked me by working, for working for the majority of the city. You have used independent expenditures to help you spread lies and hate, and as mayor, you signed the amicus brief against the majority of the people who live in West Covina. The majority in the city council and the city staff are desperately trying to keep the city from officially declaring bankruptcy. And you, on the other hand, you are costing the city precious public resources with your anti-immigrant agenda and with other antics at the West Covina city council meetings. You should not be the city, you should not be on the city council, and you should not be this mayor of a minority-majority city. You should have been, you should have not allowed, you should not have been allowed to become mayor, and you should have been recalled. The majority of the people in this city work very hard to live here, and I know some who work seven days a week. In spite of that, the majority of the city needs to register, educate themselves, and vote for those who are going to work for them. The majority of the city needs to step up before you do any more to divide and harm us. And regarding agenda item 22, independent expenditures, it's simply a tool with unlimited capacity, excuse me, with unlimited capacity, to impact our municipal elections without accountability. Please, the majority of the city council, let's move that forward. Thank you.
Phil Kaufman, followed by, who was it that turned it in? Is that Kimberly Lua or Amberly Lua?
Good evening. At the last meeting, unlike Herb, I was scared.
Good evening. At the last meeting, unlike her, I was scared. I don't want to have been in a public meeting when I was that scared, and I would like to thank again our great police force for preventing any violence from erupting. It was a scary evening. I'd like to say that Barbara Bush was the shining light of the Bush family. In 1991, April 1991, I was at the Grand Canyon, and I was privileged to hear her speak at the 75th anniversary ceremonies for the National Park Service. And she was a wonderful woman who really was the backbone, the heart and soul of the Bush family. As to Agenda Item 8, I want to thank Brian for bringing up the contents of the Department of Toxic and Substance Control report, which I was going to mention also. But I have a slightly different question as to the issue with the final cap and cover. And that is, we're in the middle of a negotiation for a project that may be built next year, the year after, or a decade for now, and the land there may be untouched for another 10 years. And what is going to be done, what can be done, to actually test the area and make sure that it is safe now and that there aren't dangerous fumes and toxic substances leaking out because there may be a not completely properly prepared cap and cover that we were previously unaware of could be, could be there now and possibly poisoning our citizens. Agenda Item 16, the last meeting, I spoke about this item. I'm not going to repeat what I said then. I would refer council to the article that I submitted at that time and the various authorities that I cited, including statistics, including studies, and including the fact that states like Colorado last year passed the half-billion-dollar mark in revenue received from the marijuana industry in that state. The city of Denver has received enough money to add over $10 million to their city budget for transportation maintenance, for parks and recreation, for homeless services, for community budgeting, and other items that wouldn't be there were it not for the marijuana industry. You can't sit and wait and let other cities go ahead and take advantage and expect to come in a year, two years, three years, four years from now. Colorado's second-largest city, Manitow Springs, I'm sorry, Colorado's second-largest city, Colorado Springs, failed to take advantage of the new recreational laws in Colorado and did not legalize marijuana dispensaries or cultivation or any part of the industry. A couple miles down the road from Colorado Springs is Manitow Springs, a community of 5,000 people. Well, Colorado Springs residents go down the road to Manitow Springs, and they produce over $1 million per year in tax revenue to the 5,000-population city of Manitow Springs. Colorado Springs missed the boat there, and now the president of the city council is spearheading an initiative drive to bring the industry to their city and keep that revenue within their city and not let their citizens spend millions of dollars and provide millions of dollars in tax revenue to a nearby city. Item 22, independent expenditures. I recently read a book called Dark Money, written by the great investigative journalist Jane Mayer of The New Yorker magazine. Dark Money is a lengthy investigative report going back decades showing how organizations across the country have been formed and, as a result of their surreptitious endeavors, provide hundreds of millions of dollars from undisclosed sources in every federal election, most state elections, and many local elections, every election cycle. We can't change the fact that the Supreme Court made it legal to allow contributions to political campaigns without any, any type of cap or limitation, but we can make it so that these, that there is transparency, and we know from where this money is coming. Hundreds and hundreds of million dollars every year, and there's no, for the most part, we don't know where the sources are. We can make that change in West Covina.
Okay, was it Kimberly Lua or Amberly or?
Amberly.
Amberly. Okay, and then followed by Alfred Williams.
Hi, good evening. My name is, my name is Amber, or Amberly Lua. I've been a resident of West Covina for the last 13 years, and I wanted to speak regarding item 13, the public camping. Despite indicating in the resolution that this would not criminalize the homeless population, I do still feel that it is punitive. I feel that even though there isn't a criminal penalty, the financial penalty is still concerning. What will happen to these individuals when they can't pay? I wonder what does this, this initiative really hope to accomplish? These penalties do not address the root causes of homelessness. I also feel that it's not a good use of our police department's time. I would hope that as a city, we can come up with a plan to help these individuals rather than penalize. Thank you.
Mr. Williams? That was our last card.
Good evening, council. My name is Alfred Williams. I'm a 40-plus resident of West Covina. And I, my opinion because I too was kind of appalled at what happened at the last meeting. And it wasn't a very good control over it. One, I just happened to be standing behind Mr. Elliott, and I was appalled at this gentleman's bad behavior, and nobody ever spoke to him. He was giving people the finger and everything else, and I think this was bad. But there's a lot of misconceptions going around. And I, I'm not sure, but I think in 1996, the US Congress passed the Illegal Immigration Reform and Immigration Responsibility Act. And this was that local governments were to cooperate with the Department of Homeland Security and ICE, and that they were supposed to actually turn in people who were so-called illegal aliens. But most cities back then, and up until 2016, didn't do very much about it. Either they had policies with their police, their police departments to either enforce it or not enforce it. So again, it wasn't in 2016, all of a sudden somebody with a campaign thing, build a wall and all this, made this an issue. And so I guess our governor decided that he would pass, somebody would come up with SB 54, and that was signed last year, if I am correct. And this law prohibits, the law limits what state and local enforcement agencies can hold, question, transfer at the request of federal immigration officers. And it bars officers from inquiring about a person's immigration status. The law exempts state prisons and county jails. So that means, you can shake your head, Ms. Spence, but that wasn't been signed if it hadn't had those provisions in it because that's what the police chiefs wanted. It does not protect undocumented immigrants who have been convicted of one of the 800 felonies within the last 15 years and who is suspected of serious crimes punishable with prison time. This law was meant to keep law enforcement, that law enforcement should not be used to assist with mass deportation. And that's what we really have right now. I also, I didn't know until I heard tonight, and also saw a slight confirmation on Mr. Spence's part, that he had signed an amicus brief for it. I would like to ask right now, is this true? Yes or no? Okay. If you did sign it, did you sign it as Mayor of West Covina? If you didn't sign it, I mean, and it doesn't matter. You have a right to sign it. I don't have any problem with that. But when Mr. Sykes wanted to sign an amicus brief, which had to do with DACA, which had nothing to do with immigrant, immigration at least, it had to do with people who had been living here since they were a kid and trying to protect their families. So I think it's kind of disingenuous on your part to sit there and say, and be, have been voting against someone else doing it and bringing in a whole bunch of people to oppose him and get him out of office, when now you're doing the same thing. But as I said then, it was his right, and when Mr. Toma wanted to do it, it was his right to do it, and it's your right to do it. So if that's what you want to do, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, there are no other cards? Mr. Toma, you signed a brief, an amicus brief?
Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and address the amicus brief issue, and I don't understand, I've never understood this connection that, you know, everyone knows I have substance abuse problems, and somehow I guess that means I can't talk about illegal immigration. I don't understand the connection. You know, I did break the law. Mr. Sykes is right. I endangered myself. I endangered others. I damaged property. Granted, I never once asked for sanctuary from it, just for the record. So there's a little bit of a difference. The law was enforced on me, and that's the way it is. I wish I had the power to remove council members, and I do not. So just so you know, I'm capable. Mr. Sykes somehow thinks I'm the reason he's not here. I don't know why. I still don't quite understand it either. As far as this issue of SB 54, there were people out of line at this meeting on both sides of the issue. I know that everybody calls me and said I should have done this, I should have done this, I should have cleared the room. I would welcome you to run and be here so you can run these kinds of meetings. My goal was to make sure everybody got heard. I think I managed that. Some people wanted preferences for Kevin DeLeón. They wanted him to go first. They wanted residents to go first. They wanted everything to go. You know, I tried to stand to our standing rules. It's unfortunate that there were people on both sides that were very, very angry and that acted inappropriately. I did receive two phone calls of people that I did eject that apologized to me for their behavior. So at least they realized that was wrong, and I didn't do background checks on everybody, so I don't know who was paid or whatever, and it doesn't really matter because people have a right to come to a public meeting and do public comment. That's just the reality. As far as SB 54, there are some fundamental differences between, Mr. Sykes, I criticize you not for signing the letter, for being in favor of sanctuary. Oh, that's one issue. If you go back to the tapes, the issue was you signed it when you weren't allowed to as Mayor of West Covina by itself. And you also did that on another issue as well, the TPP, the trade partnership stuff. So you did it on several issues. And that was a problem that you didn't seem to understand, and you still don't understand. I did sign an amicus brief. It was not the Huntington Beach one, which was what the motion was. I asked this council to participate in. There was no second to that. I did not sign on to a lawsuit about the Huntington Beach thing. I did sign on to an amicus brief, and if you read it, it says, "Mayor Mike Spence, as an individual in his individual capacity." And they did that for identification purposes, and that was the same loss brief that the City of Yorba Linda signed on to and City of Aspereya and some others. So I did sign that amicus brief. Second point, this council did vote to oppose SB 54. We voted to oppose it, 4 to 1. So we are on record opposing SB 54. I signed a brief in my individual capacity against SB 54. I don't see the problem. You know, maybe the council does, but, you know, they never reversed their position on it. The only thing was they did not take action on a lawsuit joining Huntington Beach, and I did not do that. So I hope that answers your question. Mr. City Manager, does council have any questions on that? Good? Go ahead.
What was the difference before the signing on the amicus brief versus now signing on the amicus brief? Because it sounded like there's a difference.
What do you mean? The difference was the council took action to actually support, oppose SB 54. The council did not take action on the issue of sanctuary whatsoever when Mr. Sykes signed on. Because in fact, he brought it up at a meeting, and you didn't even second it. So there was no action supporting sanctuary cities when he signed on to that letter. And there was no action by this council on the trade partnership, specific partnership that he signed on as well, as mayor, with no disclaimer that he did it as an individual. So those are, those are two different things.
Let me just say the, it was a 3-1 vote, 3-1-1 vote, actually, just to clarify the record, correct, on the, on the opposing the SB 54. At least that's what the letter said. It was 3-1-1. Yeah.
Was it 3-1-1 or 4-1?
No, I voted against. You abstained.
I thought it was 4-1.
It's in, it's in this, somebody brought, said, actually attached the letter.
No, he voted 4. Two votes.
Councilmember Warshaw abstained. Anyway, but the, there is a difference between, there is a difference between voting to oppose legislation versus voting to join an amicus brief, so I don't see it as being different in any case.
Well, that's correct, and that's why I did it as an individual. I did do it as an individual, so there is a difference. But we got to go back, because I thought it was 4-1.
3-1-1.
But you were the abstention?
3-1-1.
Because you voted no, right?
No.
Yeah.
Sustained and the three of.
Okay. I'll check that. I apologize if that's correct. That's fine. Anything else? Ms. Freeland, do you have any comments?
I do. Couple speakers got up and asked questions regarding the BKK site. As someone who was in attendance in those meetings and reading the comment, I too would understand some of the confusion and concern when you just read that one statement. So I want to clarify in a little bit more detail, just for the public's benefit. It's under the meeting that the city and St. Poli had with the DTSC and Cal Recycle, a joint meeting. And it's, one of the items here is, "Agencies are concerned the final cap and cover are not completely properly, and will ensure any future development brings the cap and cover to required standards." So when a landfill is closed, they put soil on top of it, clay and other things to cap the landfill. When the landfills are closed, that process was completed. When the city went back, was planning to do a golf course development, they put additional soil on top of the landfills in order to help prevent any of the waters from landfill from permeating down into the landfill cap or causing some of the integrity issues. Right now, DTSC Cal Recycle is looking to redesign the leachate system, as well as the methane collection system on both the Class III and the Class I landfill. Class III is the municipal waste, which if St. Poli's project ever moves forward, is where the racetrack would be. The Class I is the toxic waste landfill, which is under the auspice of DTSC and what's called the Working Group, which are people that had dumped waste there over the many, many years, and they're the ones helping fund the maintenance and the ongoing cleanup over there. The cap on both landfills is closed as far as concerns of any, you know, contamination leaking out. That's not the issue. The issue is, is if a development moves forward for St. Poli, is there enough soil up there to sustain the weight of the track facilities and to make sure that there's no water from that facility leaking into the landfill? And that's something that the environmental agencies want to look at as they're studying both the Class III, Class I systems right now. And that's what they mentioned about going to the required standards. From those meetings, it was, I think, pretty clear, and I'll have the city attorney, she was there as well, it was pretty clear that, you know, the developer would be the one responsible for providing that additional soil if it's actually needed to accommodate the DTSC and Cal Recycle should this project move forward. I don't know if, I hope that interests a little bit, the city attorney addressed some of the additional.
I can just add one item, and that is that the, on the issue of the, the gas mitigation, the Cal Recycle and DTSC have been looking at that and looking at replacing the gas system. They're looking at perhaps even moving the system in terms of its boundaries. That's an ongoing discussion that the DTSC has been studying, but they haven't reached any conclusion yet or given us any direction as to what they're going to do.
Okay, any other, we're going to pull this item anyways off the consent agenda so we can talk about some of those things there, if that's okay then. Okay. Anything else? Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we are on the calendar. We're going to remove item 8 from consent. Is there any other item that wishes to be moved, that the council wishes to be removed? Anyone? Is there a motion?
Motioner.
Does the mayor make a motion to approve all the other items on the consent except for 8?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Wu, that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the deletion of item number 8. And we're also, item 21 is taken off the agenda as well. Correct with the approval of that agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved 5-0. So now we're on item number 8. Mr. Toma, you pulled this from consent?
Yeah, I have some, I have some questions, and I appreciate the staff report with all these various lines, but a lot of this is technical, and so I'd like to ask some questions on some of these points. The, so I'm just going to go through the, by the bullet points. On the, so I'm on page 2 of 5, I'm down on the Toxics and Cal Recycle point. On the, so I'm on page two of five, and down on the toxics and Cal Recycle point, on the staff report.
Page two of five.
Page two of five, under the DTSC and Cal Recycle section.
Mr. Toma, do you mind if I just give a brief overview for the public? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Toma. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before the city council this evening, as an update on the negotiations with the Saint Poli group for the development of the former BKK landfill. Specifically, the city council asked city staff, legal counsel, and Saint Poli to meet with various environmental agencies that have some oversight or interest on any potential development at the BKK site. Those groups include the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Department of Toxics and Substance Control, Cal Recycle, and United States Fish and Wildlife Services. And each of those groups have some sort of interest on what may be developed up there. So for example, the Water Quality Control Board, we had a meeting with them on January 24th in their office in Los Angeles, and specifically, they're concerned about water that is collected on the site and how the water comes off that site. On a landfill, one of the worst things to do is having water sit on a landfill and seep into the landfill. Water getting into a landfill is not good, because it increases the amount of decomposition of the waste. So the regional water board was encouraging, you know, both the city and Saint Poli as part of the development, you know, that we don't want to have any water bodies that are on the actual property itself, or any opportunities where water can leak, or excuse me, permeate into the landfill. So the idea is, is hey, if it rains, get that water off the site as quickly as possible, and do what can be done to minimize the amount of water on the site. DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Substance Control, and Cal Recycle, we had a meeting with them up in Sacramento on February the 13th. DTSC and Cal Recycle are two separate state agencies. Cal Recycle oversees the closure of landfills, specifically Class III landfills here in our case, so they oversee the municipal waste landfill. And then DTSC is concerned about the toxic waste landfill and making sure that that landfill stays in a safe manner and perpetuity. And in their discussions, which are outlined in the report, they provide a variety of different items of, that they would like to see as if this project moves forward. United States Fish and Wildlife Services, for those who don't know, there's endangered species up on the site. It's called the gnatcatcher. It's a bird species. As well as there's what's called coastal scrub and sage, which is also a plant material, or a plant that is, you know, native to the San Jose Hills, which is right there, and has been designated both as, you know, being protected and need to have a certain habitat in order to protect both the gnatcatcher and the coastal sage. Part of that habitat has been constructed above Big League Dreams, and most of you see it when you drive up and down Azusa. You look at Big League Dreams up on the hillside, all the area around Big League Dreams you think is weeds, and it's not being maintained by the city. And that's actually habitat. There's actually a sign there that says it's habitat, because there are times where residents call and say, "Why can't you trim the trees in there?" Well, we can't, because the government has told us we can't, and has to maintain that area for the gnatcatcher and the coastal sage. That's just a portion of many acres that still need to be completed up there as part of any development, whether it be the city's golf course that was originally designed up there, or Saint Poli project, or any other project that may be built up on the landfill. In addition, there's an area of black walnuts that need to be preserved as well. And so that is something that will be incorporated into any design of any project. So with that, it's kind of a brief overview of the specific items that council members wish to address, we'll be more than happy to try and answer those as best as possible.
Mr. Toma.
The, so going back to the bullet points under the DTSC and Cal Recycle, there's the, it says that both agencies are concerned with the state of the retention basin and continue to require repairs to the retention basin. Can you explain what the retention basin is, and when you expect that will be addressed?
Great question. Retention basin is on the northwestern edge of the property that's owned by the former successor agency, and a portion of which is the part of the top deck of the landfill. That is an item we've been asking to have repaired for, I want to say, two or three years?
Yes, we've been working with the DOA for the last three years, I believe.
So this has been an item that both DTSC and Cal Recycle have been asking the successor agency to repair, because they're worried that as the rain accumulates, water goes into this basin, and the walls of the basin are in jeopardy of failing. We've had that happen many years ago, where actually flooded out and created a mudslide over their Big League Dreams and the Heights Shopping Center. This is not a city responsibility, is what we've been arguing with the Department of Finance. This is an issue since it's on successor agency property, that needs to be resolved. And so we've been requesting funding for the last few years, as was noted. We even have letters from DTSC and Cal Recycle telling the state that they need to fix this, but they've continued to deny it.
They just denied it, right?
And, yes.
They just recently denied it, didn't they?
Right. But now, on, one of your action items on this evening was to have the city purchase the properties up there, and if that transfer goes through, is approved by the Oversight Board, that will become a responsibility to the city, or, you know, we'll probably have to get that done before we do any kind of development up there. But it's something that we need to do now, because there is liability, and it could damage our property down below the detention basin.
The, it's part of the second dissent, consent decree on that last bullet point, talks about the landfill cover system, gas mitigation, collection disposal systems, and the leachate, leachate collection and treatment system. Can you briefly just describe what those are?
Sure, and the city attorney can get into the actual consent decree portion. Leachate is liquid that is generated from the decomposition of waste. So what happens is, I've used the analogy in the past where there's all these little straws throughout the landfill that sucks the water out. That's what leachate is, is the taking out of the water. The gas system is, as part of decomposition of waste, is the generation of methane. So they're sucking out the methane as well, and so that's being collected. So those are, that's what the gas mitigation system is. So those are the different type of systems they have up there for the system, and that's what they're looking to replace on both landfills.
Did you say what the, what's the collection disposal systems?
The methane and the leachate.
Oh, okay. They're written as if they're separate things, but those are the systems?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're two separate systems.
Got it, okay. And the, so this says the DTSC is still investigating what is necessary for these systems, and they're supposed to complete their investigation by the end of 2018, is that right? Okay. And so at that point, they're going to have some recommendations to the city and to, or to Saint Poli in terms of what would need to be done up there with respect to any kind of development to work around those systems, is that right?
What they're hoping, I think, is that the BKK working group will undertake some of that work. It will depend on where it all happens. There's also a relatively small pot of insurance funds that should be used for that particular portion of the landfill that may be used to fund it. Unfortunately, because BKK is bankrupt, it doesn't leave a lot of options. But as the LEA, you know, we have at least some authority, and hopefully, if they don't comply with whatever the DTSC thinks is necessary, then the DTSC will move forward with some kind of action to make them do that.
And if I ask for clarification, I don't believe that there's the financial liability of the city for these systems.
No, it's not. They're not.
But the, part of that plan is where these systems are going to go. I'd assume, I'd read between the lines that this affects the physical space, and it would potentially affect the, because it said here that the design would have to be, come up to accommodate whatever the system plan is, correct? Because there was some statement about here about the current plan not being detailed enough for them to know whether or not it would conflict with whatever systems gets decided by DTSC after they complete their investigation.
That's correct. They're asking that, you know, as the progress of Saint Poli project moves forward, if it does, it'd be a discussion that, you know, we keep open communication so that their system can be designed around Saint Poli, and Saint Poli can design itself around the needs of Cal Recycle and DTSC.
So my understanding is that Cal Recycle prefers a buffer between the landfill and any structures, is that right?
They do, but it was quite interesting, when you asked them specific questions, they said they prefer the buffer, but in other situations, they have not required a buffer, and they actually say, "If you build within our recommended design standards, that buffer gets reduced significantly." And that's similar to what happened for the Big League Dream site, as well as the Heights Shopping Center. They asked for certain design components to be included, and so, for example, we have methane sensors at Big League Dreams and the Heights in the different buildings, as well as barriers in the foundations to prevent the mitigation, or migrations, excuse me, of methane into the buildings.
So what's the buffer that they prefer, understanding that it could be moderated?
You know, they were initially thinking, I think they said several hundred feet, maybe a thousand feet, was it a thousand feet? But they said that that's, well, that's maybe preferred, it's not required.
So then, going up to page three, where it talks about the third consent decree and the potentially responsible parties, I think this is what the city attorney was talking about with respect to DTSC and payment. The payment might potentially come from the potentially responsible parties, is that correct? How many, how many potentially responsible parties are there?
I don't remember the number, but it's hundreds. And the major players are all the big corporation waste generators that you would expect on a, essentially a superfund-type site.
But we're not superfund.
No.
[laughing]
Superfund-type site. In this case, they've got, I think, already two consent degrees with that group. When this study is completed, I expect they will be negotiating a third, and that will allow for the funding of whatever work is generated as a result of this study.
So the, so then, they're going to have a plan to ask those parties to fund the site, and that will be done, they say that will be done in about, well, they say it'll be done in a minimum of two years, is that right? Okay. The, it also talks about a, the groundwater monitoring system, as well as the other systems. So what is the, what is the groundwater monitor system going to do?
Well, again, the groundwater monitoring system is the system that helps bring out the leachate system, but there's another portion of it, which are wells around the site to make sure there's no migration of the leachate off the site. And so those are what the wells are. So they make sure that the waste is contained to the landfill property, and it doesn't seep out. Because again, the landfill there, it's my understanding, did not have a liner system put throughout the landfills. And so now landfills are designed where they have a barrier system underneath. Since this one doesn't, they have more of the wells out there to make sure it doesn't leak and migrate south towards residential neighborhoods.
If they don't know, if they don't even have the plan until, anticipate the end of the year, how did they have the estimate for six years? Because they've built these kinds of systems before, and that's their anticipated expectation?
Yeah, I think based on the size of the landfill and the type of system that they're talking about, they have a pretty good idea historically of the timeline that is necessary.
The, it says both agencies want to provide additional feedback. How is that going to be done, or is there a plan or a schedule for which these agencies are going to provide that feedback?
Nothing concrete, but we shared with them, as the project progresses, we'll make sure, have open communication with them when we have more finalized designs, and start having them be part of that review. Again, they'll all be part of any kind of environmental impact report review, so the EIR and SEQA will be reviewed for them, but we've already made commitments to them that we plan to reach out to them well before that, to incorporate design concepts or any other issues before we get to the SEQA process.
It says that Saint Poli needs to complete the design to show location of project components, so that there's no conflict with the future monitoring systems that haven't been developed yet or decided upon. So I understand that to mean a more detailed design than the design that's attached to here. When do we expect to get that redesign? My understanding is, they won't know what the monitoring system design are until, at the earliest, the end of the year, correct? So they can't do a new design, I suppose, until sometime after that. What's the anticipated timeline on that?
I don't know if that's been committed as far as the timeline when that will be completed, because one of the other items that you probably haven't gotten to is U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. They want to have a biologist go out there and remap out the areas for potential coastal sage habitat, and identify some invasive species out there. They want all that done on the fish and wildlife side first, before Saint Poli moves their development. Plus, they want to have a better idea of the area where the proposed stables are going to go, to see what the grade's going to be as well. Because right now, when you go out to the site, it's quite different to what you see on the design, on the preliminary design. So those things need to be fine-tuned as well. I think we're still months away from a final design, if not longer.
And when will the, when will the test that it says Saint Poli needs to do to conduct on the compaction stability, when would that occur?
I don't believe we have the time on that at all.
So then, going back to the final agency, the Fish and Wildlife, it says that repairs are needed on the existing habitat above Big League Dreams, is this the same repairs that was referenced earlier on from the other agency?
That's correct.
It says that Saint Poli is going to need to provide the remaining CSS habitat that's required as part of the mitigation measures. So what is the remaining CSS habitat that needs to be provided?
So in the golf course design, which was approved by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, was habitat sporadic throughout the golf course. So now that if there's not a golf course being developed, where is that habitat going to be designed and incorporated into the design of Saint Poli? So before they can start including that, we need to identify how much habitat is actually still needed, and where is that going to be located in the Saint Poli design?
So how many acres are of CSS habitat needs to be part of this mitigation measure?
I'm not sure what the total number is, or how much has been certified as of yet is. We don't have that number readily handling.
They didn't give you an acre amount in terms of the CSS habitat?
There is in the actual study, so actually, as part of the approved plan, there is a number that U.S. Fish and Wildlife has. I don't know what that number is, but I also, I'm not confident on what number is still remaining. There's still a margin of error that they provided.
And that remaining CSS habitat that has to be marked off, is that on the design plan that's the attachment to the staff board?
I don't believe they've included that at this time.
So they're going to have to come up with wherever that habitat is going to go?
Correct.
Still, okay. And it says, it says that the Fish and Wildlife prefers continuous habitat, so can you explain what that means?
Sure. So they have, the habitat kind of has been identified around Big League Dreams, and along, there's a ridge line that separates, you know, the, I guess, the future city property and Golster Park and some of the open space that's out there. They've kind of identified that area from west to east, it's kind of hard without seeing the diagram, to be an area for continuance, continual area of habitat, so that the gnatcatcher can move freely from one part of the habitat to the other, especially during its mating season, and be undisturbed by everything from, you know, pedestrians, or any kind of items that could disturb that habitat.
Okay, so if the gnatcatch, we know, don't we know where the gnatcatcher is? It's, isn't it in the northwest section of the plan?
Right. Go ahead.
Okay, so it needs to be continuous from there, is essentially what they're saying?
Correct.
Wherever that acreage that they have to use to mitigate, it's going to be from that, from that, from that part?
From the existing habitat to whatever the new habitat, correct?
It also has to be where it will grow, because it grows in specific areas.
So it has to be south-facing slopes rather than north-facing slopes? So once you go over the ridge line, going down towards Golster Park, that will be preferred habitat. They prefer habitat with south-facing slopes.
And do they want some sort of buffer between the habitat versus where these structures are where people are going to be?
They do, but they haven't identified how much of a buffer. And what's interesting about that is, when we had that discussion with them, we're like, you want a buffer, but yet you have in the middle of a golf course. So there, I think they understood that there's going to be some give and take on that as well. Because you can have golf balls go in there, or golfers that go right up to the habitat, and that's an area of space. I've seen that at other golf courses as well.
I'm a little bit confused, there is no golf course, basically before, there was, there was going to be a golf course plan, there was going to be...
Yeah, habitat in the middle of holes.
I see.
So yes.
And then the, the trail system, now, is it, your understanding that that's going to be, they're okay with the trail system for people? Are there any limitations on that trail system?
There may. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, because they want to preserve the habitat, they had said, you know, they would prefer not to have any trail system up there along the ridge line, because they didn't want it to disturb the habitat of the gnatcatcher. But at the same time, they're quite clear saying, but it's such a beautiful area, we understand the reasoning for the trail system, and if that moves forward, we would prefer to have it just pedestrian. We asked them about equestrian use, and they said no, because of the waste product that horses put out, will have seeds from invasive species that would be blown out into the area. So they got pretty detailed for us, that they're preferring not to have equestrians up there, and they definitely don't want any motorized vehicles.
When they say a better grading plan, what is it that they're talking about with respect to the plan that... respect to the plan that is here?
So if you look at the location of where the stables are to be placed, there is actually a slope there, or a grade, that is not reflective in the design that CINGPOLI has provided. So that design needs to be better understood, as far as, okay, are you gonna have horses going down a slope? And at the end of the day, no, you're not, because it'd be dangerous for the horses. So that needs to be more of a grading area for the future design.
All right, I don't want to waste the council's time, I have more questions, but I understand it's technical, it's still ongoing. Has this been shared with the agencies, this report?
My understanding is it has, actually.
If there's any written feedback from the agencies, will we agree to, you know, make it public?
We will make sure, we'll reach out to them as well, too. So my understanding is actually, a member of the community's already reached out to them on this very item.
Great.
Okay, is there a motion to receive and file this?
To approve it?
We're just receiving and filing, right?
Okay. Move the motion, receive and fire, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Wu, and second by Mr. Johnson, to receive and file this report. Is there any objection to that? Okay, it's ordered, 5-0. So we're on item 13, correct? And, Mr. City Manager, I don't know, today I asked that question about the municipal code, and so, is that something that's gonna be addressed as part of this?
It certainly can be, so the city attorney...
It probably should be.
Yes, city attorney is prepared.
Okay, thank you. So are we gonna do a presentation, or what are we doing?
Yes, I can give a quick presentation. When the council took action on the ordinance to prohibit camping and storage of personal property, it explicitly included a provision in that ordinance that it was not to be enforced via criminal penalties. And so it took it outside the operation of what otherwise would have applied in our code, would have made it a misdemeanor, but potentially subject to being reduced to an infraction.
So can I make sure I understand this? So every time the city council adopts some municipal code, unless there's something explicit in there about penalties, then there is a portion of the code that automatically takes effect?
That's correct.
And that's the one year, that's the $1,000 and six months in jail, or whatever?
Up to, yes, correct. Now, what we have done over time, there are actually a number of the code sections that explicitly call out to be infractions, as opposed to misdemeanors. And there's probably a couple more that we want to update at some point. But in this case, the council was clear that there were not to be criminal penalties. So we've been working with the police department and staff in what options there would be that are non-criminal in nature, that could provide them some tool to encourage folks to comply who, you know, are out of compliance. And understand that the way that our team works, they will always offer resources to somebody that they encounter in a park that's homeless. Some of the folks that they encounter don't particularly want that help. So what we've proposed is a system whereby the very first citation for someone who declined to move along, as it were, take their things out of storage, or whatever it may be, that they be given a written warning. So there would be no fine, but there would be a record that they had previously been identified as having been in violation of the code, and warned about the enforcement. That's part of the education process. If there was a second citation, then we would recommend a $25 per citation. The goal is not to generate revenue, the goal is not to be punitive. All of these people, or virtually all of them, have some source of income. The goal is to encourage them not to want to spend that income on administrative sites, but rather to comply with the code. And so that's why we set the citation levels at 25 within a year, 50 for the third within a year, and $100 for each within the year after that. The late fee would be 10%, and there would be no collection charge attached to that. And no criminal penalties in the event that they're not paid. So that is staff's recommendation, and I'm sure that our police department and Parks and Recreation representatives can answer any questions you have.
I do have one quick question, and then I'll turn on council. When you say staff recommendation, when I read this, this is the recommendation of the police chief? Police department?
This was the request of the police department, and a conversation, yes, with the department, Parks and Recreation staff, and my office.
Okay. So, the report talks about the police department, so we're talking about the police chief is fine with this? All right? Is that it?
His lieutenant asked us to do it.
Well, I noticed it was the lieutenant and not the police chief, that's why.
The chief is aware of it, though, yes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Or Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir. My question is, how do we enforce the fines, whether they don't pay them?
The goal isn't to actually fine people. The goal is to get people to comply. And the hope is that, once they've received a written warning, knowing that future citations could generate a monetary fine, that they would actually comply, rather than putting the officers in a position to have to issue citations. At the end of the day, the police officers have the authority to seize the property that is unlawfully stored or being used to camp. And I think the department isn't terribly excited about doing that. And the hope is that a system like this will encourage folks who want to retain possession of their property to, you know, accept some of the resources that are being offered to them, move into a shelter, or rehab program, or whatever resources can be provided, so that they aren't storing their property in public and sleeping in public.
Mr. Wu?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I read through, okay, all this data report, I kind of understand, okay, I just want to kind of, maybe you can breathe through, am I correct or not? Basically, okay, before, if we do what, okay, like, no fine, then we told the person, say, hey, don't store your thing in public, and we have a notice, okay? And they would just say, can you don't do it? But they don't care, they're still doing it. So this possible is like discourage them to continue doing that thing. So we can do a warning shot, okay? And say, if you continue to put this thing over here in public or in the park, then we have no choice, we will give you a fine. So it's that the purpose, so at least now, the police will have a tease to enforce this call, this ordinance. Am I right?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Wu. They do feel that they need this tool in order to get the attention of the people that they're dealing with.
Mr. Toma?
Yeah, so is there a process, if you don't have money, in terms of these citations and the fees, to get those waived?
There is always an appeal process, and we do have a waiver process that is through the administrative citations. So they would both have the opportunity to show that they weren't in violation, and therefore should not have received a citation, or if they got a second and said, oh, I never got a first warning, whatever that may be. So yes, there is a process for them to do that.
Anybody else? Any questions on this? Is there a motion or no motion? What's the pleasure of the council on this?
I will make a motion to approve this.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Wu, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Warshaw, to approve this item as presented. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Spence?
No. Motion passes 3-2. Next item is, yeah, item 14. Oh, yeah. Now, is this, didn't we do a public hearing on this last time? When we postponed it, was it a public hearing last time? Two weeks ago? No, it says, okay.
Yeah, no, we did the public hearings last time.
Yeah, okay, item 14? Do you have a presentation?
I'll do real quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Council. Couple months ago, city staff had an operation where we brought in all the staff to learn about the emergency operations of our city, and activated our EOC, which is our emergency operations that are down in the police department, to try and provide training in case of an emergency, whether it be earthquake, fire, or whatnot. And what the responsibilities and duties are both the city staff, the city council, and others. As part of that, we also reviewed the city's municipal code section, which reflects the operations of the EOC, and found that the EOC ordinance was out of date and did not have current terminology that is readily utilized by the Office of Emergency Services. So city staff worked with the city attorney's office, we actually utilize sample ordinances that is in place in other communities, as well as the sample ordinance that's provided by the Office of Emergency Services for the state of California, on a modernized emergency organization ordinance. And what that does is establishes that the City of West Covina Emergency Disaster Council is created, and it is the mayor who's the chair, the mayor pro temp who's the vice chair, all the members of the city council, and then whoever else they appoint to be a part of this, including the city manager and assistant city manager. That is to allow that in an emergency, if, you know, God forbid, I'm unable to respond because I'm stuck in an emergency elsewhere, or worse, that the abilities of the operations of the EOC are able to continue. And so this allows for succession, it allows for who is responsible for the different actions, and also talks about how important it is to provide an emergency plan. And so we're working closely with the fire department to provide an updated emergency plan, because that has not been updated in many, many years as well. So the first step towards, you know, doing some administrative cleanup is the adoption of this ordinance.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I'll move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Out of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Warshaw, and seconded by Mr. Johnson, to approve this ordinance. Do we need to do a reading?
Ordinance number 2339, an ordinance of the city council of the City of West Covina, California repealing and replacing Chapter 8 Civil Defense and Emergencies with Chapter 8 Emergency Organization.
Okay, is there any objection to consent? Okay, it's approved 5-0. Item number 15, this is a ballot measure regarding the elimination of city clerk and elected city treasurer offices. I brought this item forward to see if there was, we already voted once to consider this, correct? Yeah. To go ahead, if the council wants to go ahead and pursue the language to eliminate these two positions, that's correct, to have you draft that? I don't know where the council is, I still think that, I used to, well, I do have the feeling that people do want to preserve this elected office just to hold on to power. The problem is, these offices, by nature now, no longer have the power they used to have. The treasurer doesn't have the power that they used to have back when this position was formed. Same with the city clerk, you know, we hire someone to do all the clerk functions. And to me, it's disingenuous to have a public office that doesn't carry out the duties that are prescribed to it in any shape or manner. I think it hurts accountability, because people think the treasurer's in charge of the money, and they aren't. You know, the city council ends up making those decisions. So I brought this forward, and want to see where council goes with it, and then I have a question later on it. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we heard at the very beginning, back a few years back, a couple years back, when our city clerk was elected, he said he was running to eliminate the city clerks. Well, he's done a very good job at that. He hasn't been here at all. We have an audit committee. Our audit committee tells you where our finances are. And I think they're doing a fantastic job, and I want to commend them for that. And I think having an elected treasurer, I mean, it's up to the residents that that's what they want to do. But I think with an audit committee that keeps everybody transparent, we have a finance director that takes care of all of our finances, let the residents know exactly who's running what. Our city treasurer doesn't run anything. She goes in, she gets all the information from our directors and stuff like that, and then she reads them, and then she writes them all down. But all the numbers are crunched by someone else. So I feel that it's up to the residents to decide if they want to do, and I just don't see a use for it. So I will be supporting it.
Anyone else, or is there a motion? I'll go ahead and move that we moved this item forward to develop language.
I'll second.
If I could request with that, just a bit of direction, because we have essentially two options in terms, we could put both items in a single measure, or we could do a separate one for the clerk, and a separate one for the treasurer. So some people may be in favor of eliminating one, but not the other, and so you may decide to put them on separately. There is an additional $9,000 cost to do them separately than to do them together.
Mr. Mayor, since you made the motion, you know, you should probably...
I'm inclined to do it separately, you know, for the... Mr. Toma?
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna vote for this, because I don't, well, I'm not gonna vote for this, because I don't have enough information, but I do think that if you're going to do it separate makes more sense, because then, I could see how people would may have a different opinion about one versus the other. So I do think two separate ones makes sense.
Well, since you're not voting for it, thank you for your input.
I took a line out of your playbook.
We'll bring back a specific measure with specific language at a future meeting for you to actually consider, to place on the ballot. The other question that we have is whether the council is interested in having, if possible, the measure take effect such that the positions would end in 2018, as opposed to anybody that runs would then be seated.
Possible, so I'm not even sure that means it's possible.
There's some suggestion that it could be, it depends upon how effective dates and when people take office, because obviously, when the ordinance is effective versus when somebody is elected, they don't actually, they don't actually take office.
Well, I think, you know, I think, well, at least, my mind is that, go ahead and tell us what those options are, when we get to the language, and we can go.
Okay.
If it's not possible, it's not possible.
Right, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Any other ideas, Mr. Toma? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Toma?
No.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Spence?
Aye. That is approved 4-1. I did have one other question. If there's a report on conduct of any of these elected officials, is that a public record?
It can be made a public record, it's not an employment record, such that it would be automatically protected from disclosure. It would be the council's authority to make that a public record.
And does this council already do that?
I don't know whether the report that was done many years ago on Mr. Hernandez was ever made public.
It was public.
It was.
But we have a report of late that has not been made public.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there consensus that that's public or not? Or do we have to do that?
If the council directs that they be public, then it would be public.
Is there any objection to that?
The only caveat would be that we would redact witness names to protect.
Got you. Okay, thank you. We're on item 16. Who's presenting the staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, before we get to that item, I did ask for a quick second. One of the other questions that was brought up during the BKK item that I failed to answer is, when did the city find out about the cap issue? It was found out that day at that meeting. So I want to make sure that was on the record as well. To our, yeah, to our knowledge, that's when they, well, actually, I know, I was in the room, that's the first time it was brought up to our attention. Right, to other staff, perhaps, but yes.
Okay, item 16? Is there a staff report?
Sure, why not?
Does council want to hear a staff report?
There he comes.
Okay, actually, this is actually an item that's requested by Mr. Johnson, so I'll let Mr. Johnson address it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just, I'd like everyone to know, I thought about this quite a bit. I know, one of the residents said he had talked to 50 people, that 50 people said that they didn't want it. I've talked to over 200 people on this issue, or maybe more than that, in the last few weeks, and stuff like that. And the question was, with the financial resources that could come about medical marijuana cultivation, would they have a problem with it if it was specified in certain areas and not spread out through the whole city, which would only be in one certain area, that would be over there in the industrial area, which basically is where I live? And they said if it was monitored right, and if they had their own security, not a one, maybe, I would have to say maybe a dozen or so objected to it, the majority of them didn't have a problem with it. And I asked them, I go, you know, we do have a financial problems in the City of West Covina. I said, if you look at Baldwin Park, it's okay, 25 mom-and-pop cultivations, half of them will never open, because the way they've done, the way they've set it up. If we set it up the right way, and it goes to the planning department the right way, and they set the regulations right, I see it being a successful situation for us. And I do want to move forward with it. I think as a city that, I don't want to be standing on the sideline. I think as a city that I don't want to be standing on the sideline and having it go. So, my opinion is, I think we ought to move forward with it.
Okay. Is there a motion on this? Want to make a motion on this, or? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with installation related to the regulations of marijuana cultivation.
Is there?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Horseshaw. Is there any more discussion on this item? Any comments? Mr. Wu.
I don't want to waste time, say again and again, thinking we have this issue back and forth about three, four times, okay? I understand we have a financial stress, but again, again, I said this so many times, okay, try to use marijuana money, it's like a drop of basket, okay? Like, it's not going to help our financial stress at all. Our financial stress, you get moving in $10 million or more, that maybe can, okay, subsidize our issue, okay, and for $500,000, okay, annually, and possible increase more police over there, and it's not a good investment. I understand, okay, and councilman Johnson have, okay, maybe, okay, tried to help out, okay, very nice guy, but I think on this issue, it's going to have a very bad image for our city. And plus, it's not fair for those neighborhood area, okay? And I think if you talk to the neighborhood or area of business owner, I think most of them, they strongly against, okay, they have the warehouse next to them, and have this marijuana cultivation, okay? And I think, and maybe will create more problem for some of business over there want to move out. And again, I understand, okay, the issue of the finance, okay, we need more revenue, but to sell, okay, cultivation of marijuanas, and with our federal government still prohibit, okay, all this, okay, drug, okay, and why we want to jump into this garage, okay? Let all the city, okay, to work on this, and see how you work, and we shouldn't, okay, go into this business. If you compare with another city, okay, okay, some of the better city, Diamond Bar, okay, Walnuts, okay, Temple City, Acadia, now then, Acadia has a lot of warehouse, they never even will bring this up to talk about cultivation of marijuana legalized in their city, okay? And because, okay, this is not going to sit well with their resident image of the city. West Covina is beautiful city, it's magnificent city, we have a lot of good thing will come, and we don't need to dip into this thing, okay? And I'm really disappointed that this thing coming back. I think we hurt our city image, and I strongly against this, so I will vote no on this.
Any other comments for anyone? I'll just add that, I mean, I'm not going to vote different than I voted any of the other times, but, you know, from my point of view is, this is here, whether we like it or not, there's going to be, right on our border, lots of these, potentially. I don't think it's a silver bullet for our financial stuff whatsoever, but if you truly think there's bad impacts because of this, West Covina is going to have those impacts just because of where they are, and we're not going to have any control and no resources to deal with it. So, I mean, that's where I'm coming from. But, Mr. Horseshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will vote on this the same way I did last time. Will it impact our financial situation? It won't fix the crisis, but every little bit helps, but that's not the reason why I'm voting for it. I personally do not have a problem with cultivation of medical marijuana. I don't like the way it's distributed to people, as I've said before, because anybody in the past was able to go and get a medical marijuana card. But now that recreation is allowed, those people are going to go do recreational. It's a proven fact that medical marijuana helps a lot of people. You hear it from doctors, there was just a presentation that was done on, I'm trying to think of the station, it was the Discovery Channel, on help, how it's helped in with epilepsy, on people who've been on drugs and would still have epileptic fits literally every day, that are now totally cured of it by using the oil from it. And I believe that it can be used correctly. I think by not making it recreational, we will not have the problems of doing retail or putting it out for retail use, and that's why I'll be supporting this.
Can we, everyone done? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Toma.
No.
Horseshaw.
Aye.
Wu.
Nope.
Johnson.
Yes.
Spence.
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Okay, item number 17, reconsideration of approval of the October 18, 2017 traffic minutes. I believe this was, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, yes. I got lost there for a minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this back up, because unfortunately, we've had some residents in the city want to run other parts of the city. They're talking about the red curbs over there on Orange Avenue, where many got to. We have a resident that doesn't even live over there, went to the traffic committee and told the traffic committee that all the streets along Orange Avenue, on North Orange Avenue right there, should be painted red. He doesn't even live there. Now, residents moved into those homes with no red curbs on them. Now, I don't have a problem with the 15 feet around the corners for the red curbs, where you can't park right up the corners. But we have residents that can't even park in front of their own homes now, because one resident thought it was their prerogative to change the lifestyles of all these other residents. Now, if the residents that lived on Orange Avenue would have a problem, and they wanted red curbs there, I wouldn't be up here talking about it today. But those aren't the one, not one of them complained about a red curb there, it was somebody that doesn't even live in the area. So, I'd like to see us go back on, take a look at it, and say, like, in the future, red curbs have to be brought forward by the residents who live there. So, I'd like to have the traffic reverse with the red curbs in that area.
Okay, that was a motion to reconsider then?
Yes.
Which you brought in approval, I think, originally, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'll second it. So, it's been moved and seconded to reconsider. Do we want to have that vote before any more discussion? Does anyone have a discussion on reconsideration? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on reconsideration, please.
Toma.
No.
Horseshaw.
No.
Wu.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Spence.
Yes. Motion fails 3-2. No reconsideration. Item number 18, these are, this one's for myself. I know Mr. Holtz brought up the issue of talking about what the particular bill was. Is that in the headline? It's not in that, because we do have a backup of what the bill is in the paperwork, so, but in the headline, maybe, if we could list, like, what the bill pertained to?
Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Holtz? Because there is it in the pages, it has the copy of the bill and stuff, okay. Well, item 18, we talked about CalPERS. It's one of the bills, there's lots of bills about CalPERS. This bill is by Senator Morlock, and what it would do is it prohibit CalPERS from doing a cost of living increase, which, of course, we end up paying for if the actuarial showed that it was, what was it, what was the degree, 20%? Was it 20%?
That's correct, but it's not just CalPERS.
Yeah, the actuarial liability.
CalSTRS, other agencies.
Yeah, CalSTRS and other agents, well, the actual unfunded actuarial liability is greater than 20%. So, it prohibit them from giving raises that they clearly couldn't afford, cost of living adjustments to retirees. I would suggest we support it. I mean, CalPERS, unfortunately, we don't have, I don't know about unfortunately, but we don't have a retirement system, so we are in control of our own destiny when it comes to CalPERS, and this is one area that should be looked at.
I'll second it.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded, that we support. 1031, any comments on this? Mr. Toma?
Yeah, the, I don't like taking positions on bills where there's no analysis unless, I think there's one later on down here where I know it directly affects us. So, whether the right number is 20% or some other number, I realize this is a problem with respect to the COLAs, and obviously, PERS is a big problem, and our retirement's a big problem, but I don't know if this is the right, the particular policy. So, I'm going to abstain. If it comes back later on, I would consider voting for it, or may vote against it, depending on what the analysis says, but I'm not prepared to vote for it now.
Any other questions or comment? Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote and see.
Toma.
I'll abstain.
Horseshaw.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0 to support SB 1031. And we're on item number 19, this was another one I brought up, AB 1065, which deals with a problem, Prop 47, and the way it deals with property crimes, and that it makes everything a misdemeanor if it's under $950, no matter how many times you do it, if you're part of a criminal gang, as long as they're under $950. It's a misdemeanor, and this would correct that and allow it to be filed as felonies if you've done it over and over again, and I would propose that we support it. It's actually part of the Keep Safe Neighbors Act that we did approve, supporting at our last meeting, but I move that we support AB 1065 by joint selection.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Toma.
Question, why is the League of Cities a watch on this bill? Does anyone know, since there's a bunch of support listed here?
I'll see if Ms. Byer has a response by chance.
Mr. Mayor, usually, if the League is taking a watch position, it's because there isn't consensus among the members of the committees for the League that.
Do they not normally have some sort of analysis or discussion as to why they take, you know, one of these positions?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Yeah. I was on one of those committees, and sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Good question. Answer that question?
I can look it up real quick if you want.
You want to do it? Yep. Mr. Toma says it's okay, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Toma.
Aye.
Horseshaw.
Aye.
Wu.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye, that's approved 5-0. And then, we're on AB 912, Rodriguez, and this actually is a very, very vital bill to the city of West Covina. As you know, the city participated in something called LA Works. I do appreciate the council appointing me two months before to that boards, when we got raided by the DA, and very still thank you, but the county, all the charges haven't been filed about anything, the county canceled all those job train contracts. As a result of that, there was not money to pay the bills, and CalPERS terminated. For some reason, they had allowed LA Works to be a CalPERS agency, terminated CalPERS, which meant those retirees received reductions. CalPERS' solution is to make cities liable for joint powers agreements retroactively agreed to for any of these. That would include the COG, which just, you know, which has liability, it would include SCAG, it would include any agency that we've ever been a part of, retroactively responsible for CalPERS obligations as a city. To me, it ends JPAs, because the whole purpose of JPAs was a limited liability to begin with, but to do it retroactively will increase the burden we'll have to pay CalPERS right now, beyond even what we have to. And I know this is opposed by the League of Cities, and already, isn't it? Correct. So, I would move that we oppose AB 1912 by Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Horseshaw.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Mr. Horseshaw. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, any objection, consent? Good. Okay, it's 5-0 to support it, and 21 was pulled. So, we're on item number 22. This is you, Mr. Toma.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is a.
We just want to clarify that that last item was to oppose the bill.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. This is a request for transparency in terms of our campaign measures, the, you know, as you know, there's a lot of entities that do independent expenditures, meaning like, meaning that it is not controlled by a candidate, whether it's for city council, treasurer, clerk, various city positions. So, there's various groups that sometimes put out mailers, oftentimes there are tack ads, negative pieces, and they have some named, some organization they create that means nothing to most voters. They've done studies that show that when people know where the ad is coming from, it affects their thinking or analysis in terms of what they think about the measure. I say "ad" because most often it's mailers in our city, but it can take other forms also. So, this, what I was primarily looking at was the disclaimer requirements in terms of having a requirement to show, first of all, for protection of the candidates, to show that this is not, the ad is not paid for by any particular, or controlled by a particular candidate. I remember there was a particularly nasty mailer, and I know candidates for the city councils wanted to say, hey, I had nothing to do with this ad, and this would help with that in terms of saying it doesn't come from any particular candidate for office, and would require a disclosure of, to of the highest contributors who paid towards that independent expenditure committee. And the other one would require disclosures of contributions when the expenditures reach a certain amount in terms of the independent expenditure committee, such that voters could be aware of where these things are coming from and who's funding them from whatever special interest it may be. So, I would ask for the council to support this. I think it's a good government measure, it promotes transparency, and it will help our voters understand and better be able to piece through where these things are coming from.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Horseshaw.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, we've seconded that we approve some kind of unknown yet, exactly how it's going to work. I would caution that there needs to be some kind of, and it's going to be a problem, I think, in West Covina because of the size, especially with the reduction down to districts, the amount of independent expenditure could be greatly reduced. I've done work for independent expenditures, I'll tell you a real story real quick. Recall election, this independent expenditure committee was doing stuff for Tom McClintock. It received, you're not allowed to earmark contributions to an IE committee, by the way, so, but it was the only election going on, so we received contributions. One was from the Pachanga Band Indian Tribes, and so, that disclaimer was on all those, and Fieldset and Company, which is Howard Amison Jr. And those disclaimers were on it, but the way the law was written, that disclaimer needed to be on it for the next election cycle as well. And so, as a result, we were, there were mail going into districts with these, with the Pachanga Band Indian Tribe, with people the Pachanga Indian Tribe were supporting for office. So, it created a lot of confusion, actually was false advertising to the public that these donors were involved in this election. That happened in another election where money came from insurance companies, and because of the way it worked, those were the biggest donors, even though they had not given a dime for six months before this particular election, they were the ones being blamed for the independent expenditure, even though they hadn't given a dime during that time period. So, there are issues when you have independent expenditure committees that aren't formed just for the city, because, you know, it wouldn't take much for the two biggest donors to be someone in Long Beach, you know, if they were doing an election in Long Beach or an LA election or something like that, and it would be false advertising. It'd be, you know, misleading. So, there has to be some way to deal with that, because, you know, to me, it would be wrong to require a reporting notice that gave a false, false information about who was behind it. So, anyways, but we'll go ahead and vote on the motion by Mr. Toma and Mr. Horseshaw. I, by the way, I just don't see how you can do that.